Good evening. It is Tuesday, May 10th. It is 6:30. We have a full dais and I am calling this meeting to order. We have a...I'm very proud to announce that we have the Navy Junior ROTC from Bastrop High School will be doing our pledges this evening. And we know it's the end of the school year, so do not refer to them as juniors because a couple of them are seniors. So, we're going to talk about what they're going to be in coming up. So, they are under the command of Cadet Lieutenant Commander Jonathan Eden, who is a senior and is planning on joining the Army. And we have Command Senior Chief...Senior Chief Aowen Rodriguez, who is also a senior, planning on joining the Army. And we have Cadet Petty Officer Maddie Pickering, who is going to be a junior and is planning on joining the Navy. And she said something about chemical engineering, which made me very, very happy. So, with that, if you would all rise, these young people will lead us in the pledges.
March. Attention. Halt. Place flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. How about...thanks. Cadet pledge.
Sir, this cadet's cadet pledge is...
I am the Navy Junior ROTC cadet. I will serve myself in the name of my family and school for a cadet. I am the official United States of America. I am loyal and patriotic. I am a patriot of the people of Texas. I always be ahead of my actions and needs. Always practice citizenship. I work hard for my life, strength, and body. I will seek the mental leadership and repair of the Constitution of the United States. Ooh, rah! Halt. Attention.
Please join me in giving them a round of applause. Bastrop High School has such a great program and they are very blessed to have Chief Canalis and Captain Fletcher. Let's give their leadership a round of applause. And if you would please remain standing, it's my honor to introduce Pastor Bernie Jackson and she'll be giving our invocation tonight. Pastor Jackson?
Shall we pray? Almighty God, we come before you this evening thanking you, God, that we're able to assemble and we're able to make our petitions known to this city and to this council. We thank you, God, for those who desire to serve. We thank you for those who are already on the council, God, doing the work. And we ask a special blessing on Councilmember Lee and Kirkland as they join this group. Help them, God, to have the wisdom to do the things that you would have them do in harmony with the other members, that they will all work together for the betterment of the citizens of Bastrop. And God, we will all grow in unity and diversity and in justice. Father, help us to be able to achieve that. Bless them, God, and strengthen them. At least we forget, God, we thank you for their families who make sacrifices as they're putting in the time to serve. We ask God in a special way that you would continue to bless this city and have us, God, to be a reflection of our risen Savior. In Jesus' name, God, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. You may be seated. All right. About to introduce one of my favorite judges of all time. We are moving on to the top of page two, the oath of office. The first, because it's place one, we will be swearing in Councilmember Cheryl Lee. Ms. Lee, if you would please come forward, I will turn things over to the honorable Chris Dugan.
All right. You ready? Oh, out steep. You stand right here, holding the Bible. Because if I hold up my right in my face, they...
See your face.
...t that. All right. You ready?
All right.
All right. Place your hand there, other hand, right. Repeat after me. I, Cheryl Lee...
I, Cheryl Lee.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of City Council, Place One...
Of City Council, Place One...
Of the city of Bastrop...
Of the city of Bastrop...
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
And will to the best...
And will to the best...
Of my ability...
Of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
All right. You don't get to run off. We have paperwork now. It all starts.
Councilmember Lee, you'll want to hand him your Bible and you're going to sign paperwork and then you're going to come join us on the dais.
Sign right there. And then right there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Mayor Pro Tem Bill Peterson a round of applause as well.
Yeah.
All right. Moving down our agenda, we're going to do a welcome to the council. Why don't we start with apparently the troublemaker you're going to be dealing with? Councilmember Plunkett?
I'm very much looking forward to this. We met right after we started our little run back in January?
We met, yeah, before, actually.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I knew right away we were going to get along great and I'm very, very much looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, we've met a couple of times and I think we've...well, I had a great time both times. You did too. But I think you're going to be a wonderful asset to the board.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yeah, congratulations, Cheryl. I met Cheryl, like Kevin, running and had some excellent conversations with her and think she's a great addition to the council. And I know they're going to miss you on P&amp;Z, but congratulations and glad to have you up here on the dais.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Well, although we won't be serving together because I'm about to leave the dais also, I congratulate you and I'm so pleased and so happy for you. I've known Cheryl a long time. She sometimes claims me and we sometimes claim each other. We are cousins and so this is a very exciting transition for her. I know that she will do very well, so congratulations and do well.
Thank you.
So, Cheryl, you remember when we met? So, we met after the Orange Wick play, met her out at Fairview Cemetery. We started talking and I said, "You need to get involved." And the next thing she knew, I'd given her an application for planning and zoning. And so, we've known each other for several years and I am just thrilled to have you serving with us on council.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for running and making this happen. Would you like to make any comments?
Well, I just want to thank everyone that supported me through all three races. Someone asked me what it felt like to not only be on City Council, but be the first black female City Councilmember. And my words, my response to them was that doors are open for anyone, no matter who you are, race, creed, color, age. It's not always easy to walk through the door. Took me three tries, but I finally got through and that's what I would encourage anyone to do. I am happy to be here. I am sad to leave P&amp;Z, but that was the best place for me to begin. And Connie talked about that because I actually wanted to run five years ago. We decided maybe start P&amp;Z and go from there and now I'm here. So, thank you for your support and for having faith in me to preside over this city. And I pray that I am led to do what is best for this community at all times and all decisions. So, thank you.
All right. Judge Dugan, it's two for one with your visit.
I love it.
So, now we are moving on to item 4B and Judge Dugan will be swearing in Councilmember John Kirkland. Mr. Kirkland, if you'll come forward.
Stand right over here. Place your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Take a deep breath. It always gets me backwards and when I swear people in court, they always raise their left hand, so you did good. If you'll repeat after me. I, John Kirkland...
I, John Kirkland.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of City Council, Place Five...
Of City Council, Place Five...
Of the city of Bastrop...
Of the city of Bastrop...
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
And will to the best...
Will to the best...
Of my ability...
Of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations. Standing. Standing. Congratulations. Now, the paperwork. You will sign right there. Councilmember Lee, I know a little bit about losing a race and then winning a race. Winning's a lot more fun, but then the work begins.
Judge Dugan has always told me there's only two ways to run, opposed or unopposed or afraid.
Scared or unopposed.
Yeah.
So, unopposed is a whole lot better.
Exactly.
Congratulations.
All right. Welcome to the dais, Councilmember Kirkland.
Councilmember Plunkett, you did such a great job. We're going to let you kick off this one as well. Would you like to start our welcome?
Yeah, I'm so good at these. John...yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Jackson. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
John, we met with him helping me out with my campaign and it was...I was amazed at how quickly you learned the process and learned the rules and learned...I'm very excited about the resources that you're going to bring to the council and can't wait to get started on this.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, John, I've only met you a little bit of time, so I can't wait to learn more and I think you're a great asset.
Councilmember Lee?
Well, John and I met at a council meeting one night. He chased me down after I spoke in front of the microphone as a citizen and we've been in communication ever since. John is a wealth of knowledge. He will ask all the smart questions so that I can learn and I appreciate that about him. But very intelligent and I think that you have a lot to bring to the council and I'm excited to be starting this journey with you.
Councilmember Crouch?
I'm excited to have John on for the same reasons that Kevin and Cheryl and Dr. Silla said. It's your great addition to the council and I know that this new group up here will do great things for the city of Bastrop. So, welcome aboard and good luck to all of us. I'm glad we have a great group up here.
I met Mr. Kirkland at the NRSA, at the Live After Five event and have enjoyed visiting with him and looking forward to get to know him. But I do want to...I apologize. I recognized Mayor Pro Tem Peterson, but I did not properly thank Councilmember Jackson for his service to the community and I've enjoyed the time that I've spent serving with him. I particularly want to do that since he was ill and unable to attend the reception that we had for him. So, can we give Councilmember Jackson another round of applause? Council has already committed to working together and in fact, we're going...we've got a big...the city manager thought we should spend some time together, so we got a big old long meeting all day long on Thursday. We'll be getting things going right off the bat. Councilmember Kirkland, do you have any words you'd like to share?
So, I've been trained on many things, but not yet on how to use this microphone. So, there's only one button though, so it looks like it's pretty easy. I want to say thank you to everybody for the last several months who have helped me through this process, the training, the city manager and all the city staff. Paul, I'm sorry to see you're going so soon, but I have to tell you officially, you're the best city manager I've ever served with. City Attorney, I mean, really, everybody that has sat with me and answered my questions as I said, "Oh, but what about this section of the code that says this thing?" Explain everything to me, so I appreciate that. I look forward to the service that we have ahead of us and I pray for discernment and wisdom. And thank you very much.
Great job. Welcome to the council. All right. We've got some fun stuff coming, but first, as per Section 3.08 of the Charter, as soon as we put new councilmembers on, we have to elect a new mayor pro tem. They will serve a one-year term and council, I'm happy to accept any nominations. Councilmember Plunkett?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Rogers. I'd like to second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett for Councilmember Rogers to serve as the mayor pro tem and a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Lee?
No.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Can I say no?
No.
Yes.
Let's have a round of applause for Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. All right. Now, we have a really special treat. Councilmember Kirkland has set a new bar immediately. Staff was like, "You've never baked a cake," so I told them they're probably better off for that. But we'll have a reception for both Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Kirkland and outstanding cake that everyone saw brought to us handmade by Councilmember Kirkland. So, at this time, it is 6:49. We're in recess. We'll take a break for about 15 minutes and have a recess. Invite everyone to enjoy the cake. All right. It is 7:07 and we are back in regular session. Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland, for the cake and thank you, staff, city staff, for cookies and the refreshments. It was great to enjoy all that together. We are moving on to item 6A, which is the mayor's report. And before we get started on that, I had a couple of quick things. Not only is Councilmember Lee the first African-American female councilmember, we also, as a result of Saturday's election, for the first time in Bastrop County, have three female mayors of the three cities, which makes Carrie Fossler very happy. And I spoke with Sharon Forster, who's the new mayor at Smithville, and Teresa McShan of Elgin, and we have decided that we are changing the secret mayor handshake because we're going to change that as a part of being the new women doing that. But I really look forward to working with both of them and it's really great that the three cities have such a strong partnership as we work together to help all of Bastrop County. I also wanted to give a shout out. It looks like Johnny's gone, but some of you get the Blue Bonnet Electric magazine, the co-op magazine that they send out. And Jada Martin is a student at Cedar Creek High School and she was one of the two people that won the Government in Action Youth Tour. She won a trip to Washington, DC and she said that she was inspired to apply for the trip because she met Mayor Connie Schrader and talked at one of a volunteer events. So, I was going to congratulate Jada and thank Blue Bonnet for including that. All right. Colin, we can go to the next page. In the upper left-hand corner, the very first ever Spring Fest was held. Talk about partnerships. That was the Children's Advocacy Center and also the CASA organization had the first Spring Fest and you'll see the other picture. I'm there with Megan Webb, who's the Executive Director of CAC, and Kristy Glasper, who's the Executive Director of CASA. And the table, both the library and the recreation center manned one of the booths and I know that the fire department was out there and the police department was out there as well. So, congratulations to them. Just below that, I took a quick picture at the Cultural Arts Commission, had their very first gathering. It was really a neat event and several people attended that. And then on the bottom, you will see the huge turnout we had for the disc golf course ribbon cutting at Bob Bryant Park. But the picture that Colin wants to show you is to the right of that and he wants to home in on the fact, he said, "Mayor, it's the best action picture I've ever taken." And you can see the disc in the air, so I'm not sure if that was good form or not and I was like, "Oh, Colin, that's embarrassing." No, no, it's a great picture. So, I promised him that I would show that. Then above that and in the center, our wonderful Table on Main event. Just love that event. And Councilmember Kirkland got to meet my husband for the first time and he was like, "It's a sighting." So, there's an official sighting of my husband. He really does exist and we enjoyed all the great food at Table on Main. And then in the upper right-hand, if you missed the chamber luncheon, you missed, I think, one of the best luncheons they've ever had. Visit Bastrop did a fantastic job and we had these two people from Dallas that just happened to bust into our luncheon and that's their little selfie that they took. And then congratulations to Executive Director Smith, that picture of she and I before the luncheon got started. So, just a lot of fun, a lot of activities that I was able to attend. If we go to the next page, I did all of these things and the First National Spring Bank, that is the Reed Sharp branch. So, they were very pleased to recognize Mr. Sharp. Many of us have known him for a very, very long time. And Commissioner Hamner has left, but he is instrumental in the Best Warrior competition and I got to go to their luncheon where they gave out the awards and that was really neat. And Colin, if you go to the next page. Tomorrow, I'll be at the CAPCOG Executive Committee Meeting and the Clean Air Coalition. Council, I've already reminded you that we have an all-day-long workshop on Thursday. There's a BDC Board Meeting on Monday and I'm so glad that the entire council is going to be together at the TML Small Cities Conference. And total mom moment. I was working on this right before Mother's Day. My oldest son is graduating from UT Law School on May 21st and so I am going to attend that and I'm very excited about that. Thank you. People have told me, "Congratulations." It was like, really, all I've done is worry about him, so haven't done much, but I am super, super proud of him. With that, we'll be going to council member reports and I will...we'll just start with Councilmember Plunkett. You'll just go first all night tonight. Councilmember?
Let's see. I was at a lot of those events too, so I don't want to belabor that. But I would like to congratulate Rebecca Gleason and the Main Street Group for putting on a great show at the Table on Main. That was...it's always a great event and it keeps getting ratcheted up every year, so that's great. Thank you.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, I did want to come. I wasn't...the tickets were already sold out for Table on Main, but I didn't get to go. But I did get to go to the very last planning meeting and I've sat through a lot of event planning meetings and, oh my God, my brain was going like this. They had so many arms going in so many places. It was so organized. I was totally blown away on how well that event, the plan, I was like, "Oh, my God, they've got all these people. Everybody knew what they were doing." It was just so...I can only imagine the event was fabulous. I did go to that cultural arts and I did want to say that was a great event too. Got to see it, all the different booths. I think it's a...that thing's...it's new to the city, the whole cultural arts, but I think it's going to be just go by Game Master. Those people are very passionate. It'll do well. That's it.
All those creative people. There was a buzz in the room for sure. So, Councilmember Lee, what have you gotten done so far?
So, one of the good things about being able to have time between the election day and being sworn in is we got to go to a lot of workshops with council, with our city attorney. We met to make sure we stay out of trouble with...we had a lot of workshops regarding our budget and we toured...I actually toured the Bastrop County Emergency Management Center because it was just something I wanted to do because I actually work in 911 in my paid job. So, I thought that that would be something that I wanted to see and have knowledge of in taking this role. But we did a lot of workshops, a lot of fiscal training. I too want to thank the staff and city manager, Tracy, who made all those numbers make sense to me during our fiscal training. I also had the opportunity to visit our art center, the Art After Dark. If you have never been to an Art After Dark and you've had a long month and just need a place to relax and chill and meet some good people, I encourage you to go check out Art After Dark. I didn't get to go to Table on the Main because of some personal issues, health issues in my family, but I have just been busy and active doing workshops, reading a lot and watching a lot, so to prepare me for today. So, again, I'm just glad to be here.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
I got to miss all the stuff that y'all got to go to last week because I went out of town partially. It was my granddaughter's first birthday party out in Odessa, Texas, so I got to spend it driving to West Texas, which was a thrill. And I did get to miss the Table on Main, but I was at the Main Street meetings when they were planning that and there's an incredible amount of work that goes into that. So, kudos to everybody that got to benefit from it and got to...everybody that got to participate in it and thank to all those people that got to do that. And the Frisbee Golf. I really wanted to attend the Frisbee Golf, but I was gone that day as well. And then the rest of the time, I've been on injured reserve, so I'm happy to do a show and tell for Chief Rosales for how not to burn trash in the country if he needs that and that's really the only other thing I did. So, that was a short week for me, but great to see my grandkids.
Family is extremely important. We're glad that you're okay and we're sorry... And the Commissioner Hamner has left, but he is instrumental in the Best Warrior Competition and I got to go to their luncheon where they gave out the awards and that was really neat. And Colin, if you go to the next page. Tomorrow, I'll be at the CAPCOG Executive Committee Meeting and the Clean Air Coalition. Counsel, I've already reminded you that we have a all-day-long workshop on Thursday. There's a BDC Board Meeting on Monday. And I'm so glad that the entire council is going to be together at the TML Small Cities Conference. And total mom moment, I was working on this right before Mother's Day. My oldest son is graduating from UT Law School on May 21st and so I am going to attend that and I'm very excited about that.[305.12][305.12](APPLAUSE). Thank you. People have told me congratulations. It was like, really, all I've done is worry about him. So haven't done much, but I am super, super proud of him. With that, we'll be going to Councilmember Reports and I will, we'll just start with Councilmember Plunkett. You'll just go first all night tonight. Councilmember?
Let's see, I was at a lot of those events too, so I don't want to belabor that. But I would like to congratulate Rebecca Gleason and the Main Street Group for putting on a great show at the Table on Main. That was, it's always a great event and it keeps getting ratcheted up every year, so that's great. Thank you.
Excellent. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Well, I did want to come, I wasn't, the tickets were already sold out for Table on Main, but I didn't get to go. But I did get to go to the very last planning meeting and I've sat through a lot of event planning meetings and oh my God, my brain was going like this. They had so many arms going in so many places, it was so organized. I was totally blown away on how well that event, the plan, I was like, "Oh my God, they have got all these people, everybody knew what they were doing." It was just, so, I can only imagine the event was fabulous. I did go to that cultural arts and I did want to say that was a great event too. Got to see it, all the different booths. I think it's, that thing's, it's new to the city, the whole cultural arts, but I think it's going to be, just go by Game Master. Those people are very passionate, it'll do well. That's it.
Yeah, all those creative people, there was a buzz in the room for sure. So, Councilmember Lee, what have you gotten done so far?[411.53][411.53](LAUGHTER).
So, one of the good things about being able to have time between the Election Day and being sworn in is we got to go to a lot of workshops with council, with our city attorney. We met to make sure we stay out of trouble with, we had a lot of workshops regarding our budget and we toured, I actually toured the Bastrop County Emergency Management Center because it was just something I wanted to do because I actually work in 911 in my paid job. So I thought that that would be something that I wanted to, to see and have knowledge of in taking this role. But we did a lot of workshops, a lot of fiscal training. I too want to thank the staff and city manager, Tracy, who made all those numbers make sense to me during our fiscal training. I also had the opportunity to visit our art center, the Art After Dark. If you have never been to an Art After Dark and you've had a long month and just need a place to relax and chill and meet some good people, I encourage you to go check out Art After Dark. I didn't go, get to go to Table on the Main because of some personal issues, health issues in my, my family, but I have just been busy and active doing workshops, reading a lot and watching a lot, so to prepare me for today. So again, I'm just glad to be here.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
I got to miss all the stuff that y'all got to go to last week because I went out of town partially. It was my granddaughter's first birthday party out in Odessa, Texas, so I got to spend it driving to West Texas, which was a thrill. And I did get to miss the Table on Main, but I was at the Main Street Meetings when they were planning that and this, it's, there's an incredible amount of work that goes into that. So kudos to everybody that got to benefit from it and got to, everybody that got to participate in it and thank, thank to all those people that got to, to do that. And the Frisbee Golf, I really wanted to attend the Frisbee Golf, but I was gone that day as well. And then the rest of the time, I've been on injured reserve, so I, I'm happy to do a show and tell for Chief Rosales for how not to burn trash in the country if he needs that and that's really the only other thing I did. So that was a short, short week for me, but great to see my grandkids.
Family is extremely important. We're glad that you're okay and we're sorry that you had a mishap. And this is a reminder that there's no burning inside the city limits. He was not inside the city limits and this shouldn't happen to our city residents because there's no burning inside the city limits. Councilmember Kirkland?
You know, I spent the last two days baking a cake, so (LAUGHTER) I don't remember what came before that. No, I, I went to a number of the same events that were mentioned here and enjoyed them all thoroughly and I'm excited about the next steps in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel, we're moving on to Item 6C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of the staff team, welcome to the City Council, Councilmembers Lee and Kirkland. And thank you both for, and you both already mentioned it, diving right into the tours and the orientations and the workshops we've been able to hold. It's, it's great that you guys both promised to be very active and you intend to stay very well-informed and that's, that's comforting. That's, that's really great. Thank you for what holds to be a very engaged city council and everyone benefits from, from that. So Colin, I don't, I don't want to steal the thunder from the proclamation that the Mayor's going to provide a little bit later, but one of those proclamations is for Building Safety Month. And I did want to acknowledge some of the really cool community engagement stuff that building official Shirley Ellis has been involved in. And I know that's awfully small type and hard to read from a distance, but Shirley has been visiting several elementary schools in the area for the last several days, couple of weeks. And in that capacity, she, she awards the kids, this, these are like third graders and fourth graders, their, their very own building permit. And there are children's books that are all about building and, and building safety and structural soundness and makes all of that real and tangible to her audience as well. She's done a great job, I think she's enjoyed it. So thank you Shirley for, for doing that. Oh, and there's, there's some photographs of, of those visits. And Terry Moore and Rebecca Gleason and I had a meeting a week or so ago with Jamie Cersey with the Bastrop State Park. As, as most of you know, the State Park last summer and this summer also plans to provide the, open the pool at the State Park and make that available to city and, and county residents. I've been asked to, to get the word out that they are struggling to find lifeguards. And if, if you know of someone who is looking for a fun and cool summer job, there's a, there's a phone number on the screen if you'll blow, oh, I can see it from that screen, 512-321-2101. Call that number and let them know that you're interested or you know someone who's interested in that summer job. As the, as others have already mentioned, Counsel, we do have a very full day planned for you on, on Thursday of this week. I sent an email to council members and the new council members on Friday, giving you a heads-up on what to expect for, for some of that. At your seats is a, is a notebook. Thank you, Mayor. It's that notebook. Please take that home with you this evening and bring it with you on Thursday. It is chock-full of, of good information. This is our annual pre-budget planning session. Your feedback and direction that you'll provide on Thursday will, will enable us to create a budget document, a budget proposal that we'll bring back to you in July that reflects your, your wishes. And that is what that is all about. Our next regular council session is set up for May 24th and we're still obviously developing the agenda for that meeting. I did want to give a heads-up to Counsel on one item that may be on that council agenda. And, and Counsel, I gave you some information about this in a weekly memo a few weeks ago. In, in March of this year, administrators from the school district let us know that they, they don't intend to or are not able to comply with the City of Bastrop's drainage requirements in the Gill's Branch watershed as it regards the implementation of their, of their bond projects. They, they weren't able to plan for it, they didn't budget for it, and it is their intention to ask the City of Bastrop to waive those, those requirements. What they are offering in return is a drainage standard that would keep the current condition the same. They are offering a, a net zero drainage impact as a result of their, of their construction activities. This is very obviously a, a serious subject. The city council a few years ago did adopt very stringent drainage standards for the Gill's Branch watershed. That was in direct reaction to a very real flooding history in, in that watershed. I do think we're going to be able to work something out here. The staff team is working hard towards that objective. The BISD has offered, as an alternative to following those drainage standards, that they contribute a proportionate share of their impact in the watershed to the ultimate improvements to the Gill's Branch watershed. Counsel, you, you know that we have planned for some time and actually have paid for a complete design of improvements to the Gill's Branch watershed that will alleviate these drainage concerns. We have been applying for, we continue to apply for grants to fund that project. It is currently estimated to be a $15 million project. So the school district is offering to dedicate land towards that effort and to contribute a proportionate share. So I think there is a path to an agreement here. Again, we'll be continuing to work hard on that. One, one point we are stressing is that the school needs to at least perform drainage improvements that protect against the, the hundred-year storm. We are approaching that as a, as a, as a bare minimum. We do realize that the school is anxious to get this resolved. Their, their construction schedules are dependent on a quick resolution. And so I know this is more than what I typically do to describe a future agenda item, but because of the magnitude of the subject I wanted, and because I understand that there is some community discussion about it, so I wanted you to hear from the city manager what the, what the facts are. Happy to answer individual questions between meetings, but recognizing that this is not an item for discussion on tonight's agenda. We, we should probably take those questions otherwise. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions for the city manager? All right, we are moving on to proclamations and I'm going to go down to the floor. We have a couple of important weeks coming up and the first is Item 6D, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing May 15th through the 21st as Public Works Week. And I believe we've got my good friend Curtis Hancock, oh, he brought one person, only one person? They're all tired, they, they work really hard. And they all love being here at city council and in front of everyone. So, "The public works, infrastructure facilities and services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' health, safety and well-being. These are the moms of the household." They, and I say that because they take care of everything. Everyone assumes they're going to take care of everything and very often, the only time they hear is if something didn't quite get taken care of. Then, then suddenly people are real interested in, in who they are. But they certainly protect the public interest for citizens, civic leaders and children in our country to understand and appreciate public works programs in their communities. The quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, construction are all dependent on the efforts and skill of the public works officials. The year of 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week. Like, that was way before you were born, wasn't it? Yeah, there you go. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st as Public Works Week. Please join me in giving them a round of applause.[1228.11][1228.11](APPLAUSE). Good job, good job. Thanks for coming in.
I've got to say Curtis, that the road repairs are 100% better than they ever have been. So thank you for, for doing that and helping us with the, with the streets.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. All right, Chief Nagy, you brought some folks with you, it's time for you guys to come forward. We're on Item 6E, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing May 15th through the 21st as National Police Week.[1262.08][1262.08](APPLAUSE). Chief Nagy, why don't you introduce who you've got with you tonight?
Yeah, so we've got...
Into the mic where they can hear you.
I should know this, right? Yeah, so I've got Sergeant Chavez, FTO Barnes, that's our field training officer, along with our newest officer, Jalen West, and then Mesketa, and then we all know my boss, Assistant Chief Stefanik, so...[1288.58][1288.58](APPLAUSE).
So, so proud of you guys. The first recorded death by, in the, a police force was in 1791. More than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. In 2021, 616 fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty, 117 of those in the state of Texas. In 2022, 101 fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty with 23 from the state of Texas. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC. And the names of the heroic Texas peace officers are engraved on the Texas Peace Officer Memorial in Austin, Texas. Whereas May 15th is designated as the Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen heroes and their families and US flags will be flown at half-staff. Whereas Congress has designated the calendar week of May 15th falls be known as National Police Week. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st as Police Officer Week in Bastrop, Texas. We are extremely blessed to have Chief Nagy and his boss, Chief Stefanik, and the, our newest officers that have joined. There are city forces all over this nation that have vacancies and don't have good police officers in their community. They make all the difference in the world. I'm extremely proud of the force that we have. I always get compliments in the way that they interact with our citizens and I just want each of you to know how much you mean to me. You guys be safe because I don't ever want to see your name on a wall. Let's give them a round of applause.[1407.01][1407.01](APPLAUSE). All right, our next proclamation, and Shirley, you can come forward, is for the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the month of May as Building Safety Month for the City of Bastrop. And the city manager already showed you a little bit, and I don't know if you read all of that real quick or not, but they got hard hats and they applied for their permit and they got a little building kit and if they finish the kit and bring it to City Hall, they get a certificate of occupancy for their little building, so they probably know more about the building process than some other folks in town. Whereas the City of Bastrop is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on safety and economic values of homes, buildings and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of disaster. One of the things that I really brought, really made an impression on me is the fact that, again, these are folks that you don't hear from and you, but you count on them doing a good job. If anything ever catches on fire, if something falls apart, immediately it's, "Well, didn't somebody inspect that? Who was the inspector? Did they get a certificate of occupancy? Shouldn't the city have protected us from that?" So it is a profession that is key and integral to everything we do and it's one that you may not think about a whole lot. The City of Bastrop building officials serves as the elected member of the International Code Council Board of Directors. And whereas Building Safety Month is to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety are local code officials who assure us of safe, substantial, sustainable, energy-efficient and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. Whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential services provided by all local building and fire departments in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May as Building Safety Month. Let's give Ms. Ellis a round of applause.[1571.24][1571.24](APPLAUSE). All right, good job. All right, last but by no means least, come on up, Ms. Fossler. This is the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing May 14th as World Migratory Bird Day. I'm very disappointed that you do not have your bird hat on.[1602.01][1602.01](LAUGHTER). She rocks. She is everything about our bird city. Whereas World Migratory Bird Day is a campaign to raise awareness for the conver, for the conversation of migratory birds and habitats they live in. This event is an awareness-raising campaign highlighting the need for conservation of migratory birds and their habitats. It aims to draw attention to the threats faced by migratory birds, their ecological importance and the need for international cooperation to conserve them. The theme this year is Focus on Light Pollution. Artificial light is increasing globally by at least 2% per year and is known to adversely affect many bird species. Light pollution is a significant threat to migratory birds, causing disorientation when they fly at night, leading to collisions with buildings, perturbing their internal clocks or interfering with their ability to undertake long-distance migrations. More and more cities in the world are taking measures to dim building lights during migration phases in spring and autumn. Best practice guidelines are also being developed under the Convention on Migratory Species to address the growing issue and ensure the action is taken globally to help birds migrate safely. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 14th as World Migratory Bird Day. Let's give them a round of applause.[1693.12][1693.12](APPLAUSE). All right, Counsel, we're on the top of Page 3 and it is time for Item 8A, Received Presentation on Fiscal Year 2022 Second Quarterly Report. And this will be done by Assistant City Manager Gleason, looks like she may have some help. And newest council members, you've got a notebook. Other council members, you've got what to put in the notebook that you already had. So, Ms. Gleason, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I am happy to be here this evening to present to you our second quarter report for fiscal year 2022. It was another busy quarter, so there was a lot of information jam-packed into your quarterly report. I've reached back from both the mayor and Councilmember Kirkland, so thank you for that. We'll take those improvements into account for our next quarterly report, but we'll go ahead and get started on some of the big points. So wanted to bring to you guys' attention an update on the downtown lighting project. Currently, the project sits in CIP. We are actually going to be moving that to a management... We are actually going to be moving that to a management project in Q3, so that will take that out of the engineering department, and we're going to put that under myself as the project manager. So, we are going to separate out the uplighting of the trees from the building lighting. The scope was just too different with one needing some pretty substantial electrical engineering work. So, with the lighting of the buildings, we are going to go ahead and move forward with that. We do not need that level of electrical engineering, so we'll get started on that right away. There are two different companies we've been talking to, and we are working on the process of reaching out to the building owners to get their buy-in. So, we'll have a more substantial update for Q3 on where we are with all of those things. And then, the uplighting of the trees will return separately for council consideration. It'll be brought back in through the CIP. Wanted to give you just kind of an oversight. Three of our major projects in our CIP are, of course, our wastewater treatment plant, our West Side Collection System, and Transfer Lift Main. So, ACM Jobe is going to give you kind of an oversight on how all of those projects fit together, because we do list them separately in the CIP, and kind of how all of their timelines fit together.
Thank you. See if we can get this to work, it's been a while. There, as Rebecca mentioned, or ACM Gleason mentioned, there's actually three projects, but really one overall wastewater system. We talked about the plant itself, which will see the location here. What you see in blue is actually part of the West Side Collection System, and what you see in green is the West Side Collection System, but a different phase. So, that took a little extra time to acquire land. What you see in blue is already under construction and should be complete in about a month. Green will actually bid in August. And then, lastly, there is the Transfer Lift Station in Force Main, which takes the wastewater from the east side of the river to the west side of the river, eventually gravity-feeding into the overall wastewater treatment plant. Here's a breakdown of kind of each project and the projected schedule and where we're at today. Phase 1, like we talked about earlier, of the West Side Collection System, is to be completed in June. We expect to bid out Phase 2, which you saw in green earlier, in August of '22, with the completion date of June of '23. That gives us plenty of time to get ahead of the growth that we expect to happen in that area. The Transfer Lift Station in Force Main design is actually in design now. They're doing some survey work. We believe that that'll actually go to bid in March of '23, and then there's a, there will be a nine-month construction duration. Estimated completion for that plant is May of 2024. I'm sorry, that, that project is May of 2024. And at that point, you would actually turn off everything to the east side and would no longer have two separate locations running. The wastewater treatment plant, Phase Number 3, which is Phase 1, the contracted completion date is August of 2022. We are seeing some delays. That's something, if we want to go into more detail, we should probably talk about it in executive session. But the current completion date, we're actually talking about recovery schedules with the contractors now, and making sure we can do everything we can to meet that date. Phase 2 will actually be the next phase in the, the next Lego piece, if you will, that's kind of how we described it. Another 2 million gallon a day plant right next to the one that we're currently building, and the design for that will start in October of 2023. And what's important here is the TCEQ requires that the design for plants like that begin at 70%, and they're under construction by the time they reach 90% capacity of that overall 2 million gallon a day train. So, in May of 2024, when we turn off the existing wastewater treatment plant to the east, all the load will be shifted to the west, and we'll be somewhere at our estimate in that 70% to 75% capacity. So, we'll already be ahead of that, we'll already be in design. And then, as far as the construction at 90%, that's going to determine how fast we grow. So, it's a little bit later off to be determined. But the good news is, all of the extra work that's going on the east side of the plant now, or the east side of plant locations, the minute that this Phase 1 is completed for the West Side Collection System and the plant is, Number 3 is completed in August, we should be able to turn over about 870,000 gallons a day to that plant. So, both of those plants would operate for a short period of time until May of 2024 together. And that's, that's it. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. I know that we've been hauling sludge, council's aware of that, and when we talked earlier today, you did that when, when we can get the first plant going, it ought to eliminate the, we shouldn't have to be hauling sludge anymore.
Correct. We'll no longer have the expense of hauling sludge. There may be some operational changes that we'll need to make. We'll bring that up to you later on with some staff recommendations. There are some mandatory regulations that, when you treat a certain level or a certain amount of wastewater, you have to have a certain class operator, so we may have to have two operators. I think we currently have that on staff, and we may need to adjust some, or at least look for those folks in the future.
Incrementally, light years ahead of where we were three years ago.
Yeah, absolutely. We are planning for the future every, every day.
Great. Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe?
All right, thank you. All right, back to the man...
I had a question before she goes to the next project.
Yeah, Mayor Proton Rogers.
On your, on the lighting downtown, do you have a rough estimate, when you think the lighting on top of the buildings might be next year, before Christmas of '25? What do you think?
So, we're...
I know it's a rough estimate, so I'm not going to hold you to it.
I probably can't give an estimate right now. We're talking to, so there's only a few major companies in Texas that specialize in that and work with other historic downtowns, connecting to historic buildings are sensitive, so I can provide a better update probably in a few weeks of an exact timeline.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as everyone is well aware, in 2011, we opened the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center, and that was built with debt taken on by the Hotel Occupancy Fund. And so, we have, over time, looked into and had studies done on that convention center. The first major one was 2015. We had a sales marketing image and awareness review that was completed, and they came back with some key findings on how to improve usability of the convention center. The first thing they mentioned was that a dedicated marketing organization, which we are now really proud to have, the partnership of Visit Bastrop, who's doing a great job. They mentioned the lack of an adjoining hotel. They mentioned that there's no catering kitchen. There's simply a warming kitchen, which I now know are different, and that we lack small meeting room space. So, that was 2015. In 2018, the city hired DP Consulting to determine a hotel feasibility study. At that time, in 2018, they determined that there was market justification and that the market could support a 120-room hotel connected to the convention center on the site owned by the city. So, this year, for fiscal year '22, City Council placed on, as one of our management projects, to take that a step further and see if we could enter into a partnership to get a hotel built. We have been testing the waters and having conversations. We weren't sure post-COVID if that would even be something that would be feasible, if people would be interested, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive. And so, we are moving forward with having some discussions with different developers. And so, we wanted to brief City Council and let you know that we will be back in June to provide more information. But in the meantime, we wanted to provide you and the community some information on kind of what parameters we've been, we've put in place to oversee those discussions. So, our goal of the project is to leverage the current public investment that we have in the convention center through the hot funds and increase the economic vitality of the downtown corridor. Chestnut is a big connector piece in our downtown, and having that built out with a strong boutique-type hotel could do a lot for both tourism and supporting our small businesses downtown. We also understand that it's important that we fulfill that need for a catering kitchen and have that small meeting room space. So, we have put some parameters in place. We want at least 120 keys. I've learned a lot about the breakdown for the different room numbers means something. So, 120 keys is the size for a boutique-type hotel. There needs to be a catering kitchen facilities, which would allow not only for full catering out of the convention center, but for a restaurant or bar operation within the hotel. We need the flag or brand approved by the city, and the reason that's important is because it speaks to the quality of the hotel, both in its development and in its maintenance. We would like the developer to operate, maintain, and upkeep the hotel. We are looking for a partner that has a demonstrated record of success in hotel management and also has the financial capacity to take on such a large project. We are also looking, as part of the incentive, that they would take on the management, maintenance, and repairs of the convention center. We also want to make sure that we are protecting the city use and community use, so we would retain an agreed amount, number of uses per year to ensure our local needs are still being met. We also created what we call Project Guiding Principles, and it's just a reminder, based on our nine focus areas, of what is really important to our community as based on City Council objective. So, number one is to be fiscally responsible, and that is to ensure that we minimize the amount of public financial participation in the project through use of non-financial incentives that we have already available. We also want to ensure the project is multimodal, which means it appropriately connects to the public realm, and it will do so by yielding to the pedestrian right-of-way, creating spaces for community opportunities for gathering, and also supporting possible retail. We want to ensure it is uniquely Bastrop, meaning that its design is consistent with our history and also with the feel of the area, and that would be by mutual approval of the design. We also want to ensure that it works towards managing growth, and that has to do with placement on the site, ensuring drainage needs are met, and in planning for increased traffic flow to ensure that any impact on our community is a positive one. So, with that, we will be continuing our discussions with possible developers and hope to bring you a more in-depth update in June. Communication. We recently started season 2 of our official City of Bastrop podcast, Overheard at City Hall. Season 1 performed very well. We had 13 episodes with a total of 26,000 viewers. So, we have people all the time state that they have been learning a lot from them, and people outside of our city, we go to conferences, we were talking to a contractor the other day who actually said that he decided he wanted to work with the city when he saw our podcast, so we're very proud of that. Season 2 has so far included a discussion on wastewater with Water Wastewater Superintendent James Wilson. We have done Talkin' Trash with Tracy Moffett, who is our utility customer service supervisor, and our latest episode is performing very well. It's Officer Judd and Officer West, the two cadets that recently graduated and have entered the Bastrop Police Department, and that was a really great episode, if you haven't seen that. Season 2 is focusing on really talking to the people with the boots on the ground, really getting down into the employees, the goal of which is to, number one, educate our community on how your city serves you, but number two is to humanize the city and just really connect to our community, that we are in fact just fellow community members here serving. Community safety, wanted to take a moment to talk about this. You will see that we have had a pretty big rise in thefts, and you can kind of see that it ebbs and flows, but that theft, we dug into that number, and most of it is tied to retail theft. We saw that our retail theft from Q1 to Q2 doubled, and I also had the question that the mayor had been getting a lot of calls about catalytic, catalytic, catalytic...
Catalytic converters.
I even wrote it down the way it sounded, because I knew that I wouldn't get it. Catalytic converters, and there were eight of those, so they are working on some ideas on how to combat that in particular, but...
So, just for clarity, retail theft is what a lot of people just call plain old shoplifting.
It is.
That, that's what retail theft is. Obviously, motor vehicle theft comes in different. If you've gone into someone's house, it's a burglary, but retail theft is showing up as theft. It's, it's people stealing from stores. That's, that's, that's part, you're saying that's all but eight of the 64? And there may be others, but it was, that's the biggest contributor.
That's the biggest contributor. The other would be theft from person, so if I took something from your purse. Under Economic Vitality, we have special events. It was a busy special event season. We started it off with the 33rd MLK Junior Holiday Commission Walk and Celebration. The walk was really well-intended. It was a beautiful morning in Bastrop. It was a beautiful walk. The celebration afterwards, we were in, at that time, a COVID resurgence, and so the commission decided to make the event virtual, so we livestreamed that, we put it on our YouTube, and we also had a Zoom signup that you could get a link for, but that was a really great event. The music was incredible that day, so we enjoyed that. We will host that in another two years. It will come back to us. We've also been having our spring movies in the park, so those have been a lot of fun. We typically have three in the spring, three in the fall. Our spring movies are in Bob Bryant Park, so we typically have between 200 and 300 attendees to that. We have been partnering really heavy with our community friends, so we have members from the BISD Booster Band Club come out, the cheerleaders come out, they'll sell drinks and treats. We've had churches come out that have just given away food, that aren't asking for anything. We've had small businesses come out, so it's been a lot of fun connecting with them. Often, our assets come out, and we'll bring games for the kiddos, so that's been great. We also had our Easter in the park event. We had about 750 attendees for that, so that was really a popular day. We showed Peter Rabbit II, which apparently is a very important distinction, but it was, it was a good day and a lot of fun. So, we're thankful for all of our community partners and all of our staff members who show up and work those events with such a great attitude. Visit Bastrop, I know that you just got a make-your-report from Visit Bastrop, but I specifically wanted to point out that they just end at Q2, and they have already met all of their annual goals, so they can take the rest of the year off, I think.
No, they cannot take the rest of the year off. Sorry.
I don't think I have the power to do that anyways, but we're really thankful for their partnership and their hard work, so we appreciate them. Wanted to talk about managed growth. You probably noticed on your charts that we had a big dip in new home construction, and so the big thing that I wanted to make sure was, is this a blip on the radar? Because this is a snapshot in time, the last day of the quarter, or is this something that we should be expecting going forward? And it was a blip on the radar. So, right after that, Bastrop Grove put in for their new home permits, and that is going to be 319 lots. So, next quarter, we will be back up high where we have been. Also, had some great feedback from Councilmember Kirkland. He stated, you know, we talk about how many we've issued, how many have been submitted, how many have been issued, and then why those ones that are outstanding where they are, but we don't talk about ones... But we don't talk about ones prior to that quarter. It's just in that quarter. And so, he asked in future reports that we include a column just prior to that quarter, how many are still outstanding? If we had six outstanding last quarter, what happened to those? If we had five the quarter before that? And so, we will, going for, add a chart or add a column to go over those. But in the meantime, wanted to go ahead and give you some information. So, we pulled all of the outstanding permits prior to Q2, and we had 10, which was awesome. Of those 10, we broke them down. Four of them are waiting on the applicant for additional items. We had two of them. We are waiting on the applicant's response to comments. We have two that the applicant asked to place on hold, and then we have two that are in review, and both of those, the city is actively working on and going back and forth with the client. I believe both of them, actually, the building official has been meeting with them and working through that. Organizational excellence. I wanted to take a moment to brag on some incredible people in our organization. We received two big awards for our finance department this quarter. So, the Government Finance Officers Association, we received the Distinguished Budget Award, and that is given for budgets that are of the highest quality and meet the GFOA's best practices in accounting. So, we're really proud of our CFO, Tracy Waldron, and her team. We also received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Supporting, Financial Reporting, and that is for those cities that go beyond the minimum requirements for financial reporting and prepare a report that has, adheres to the highest aspects of transparency. So, we're very proud of that. We also were able to celebrate that some of our elected officials received their Certified Municipal Official designation, which is no small feat. So, our former city council member, Lyle Nelson, received that designation. Former city council member, Doc Jackson, received that designation, and of course, our Madam Mayor, Connie Trader, received that designation. So, we're very proud to celebrate them and their commitment to achieving that in service of our community. Going on to our city assets. We have, our first city asset is the Bastrop County Historical Society Museum and Visitor Center. Specifically, I wanted to point out that they, this quarter, did their first ever electronic newsletter. They, up until that date, had been mailing their newsletters, old-school style, so really excited for them. They had already, in just a single quarter, 427 signups and have a 52% open rate, which is crazy. Your average open rate for newsletter is high 20s, so they are doing wonderful with that. One of their highlights for the quarter was that they had 1,070 volunteer hours. So, I don't know how you tap into that volunteer market, but I'm going to have to figure it out. We have the Bastrop Opera House. Basically, I highlighted all of their things because they really kind of blew away their engagement this quarter. They had 64,000 website visits, which is incredible. Their reach on social media was 199,000, with engagement being 23,000. They also, they had been reporting how many newsletters they sent out, and we asked them to switch to number of distribution recipients. And so, they have almost 15,000 people who receive their newsletter, and they too have a strong open rate of 43%. They, their cool things, I always ask the assets in Visit Bastrop to tell me what's going on that's cool we should mention. So, Little Shop of Horrors opens this weekend, and shows are already selling out. So, if you want to see that show, go ahead and get your tickets. We saw a brief preview of that at the gathering event put on by the City of Bastrop Cultural Arts Commission, and it looks incredible. So, hop online and get your tickets. They were also recently asked to be the grand marshal in this year's Juneteenth Parade, and so they were really, really proud of that fact and wanted me to mention it to all of y'all. And the last is Lost Pines Art Center. The Lost Pines Art Center, I wanted to point out that they've had their largest reach since the beginning of 2021, with Facebook reach being 26,000. They also had their largest amount of visitors. They had just over 1,700 visitors this quarter, and they had, the month of March is National Youth Art Month, and so they had youth art workshops that went really, really well. And in fact, they were, have decided next year to add a youth art show, so that is exciting. So, any questions on this quarters?
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Council, any questions for the assistant chairman? I would like to remind the public that if you go to the agenda packet, there's a link, and so you can see the entire 146 pages, but if there's any charts that you're wanting to see more of, all of this is public information and readily available. I also want to point out that we have representatives from our assets that are here tonight, and just hats off to all of the organizations, just really outstanding job, Nicole and Chloe both, and certainly Ms. Smith. We've already given you a round of applause a couple times, so really appreciate you guys coming and the great work that you do together is, that's really part of the tapestry of our community is being able to leverage those assets together. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gleason. All right, Council, we're moving on to citizen comments, and we have two folks signed up for our citizen comments. The first is the famous Carrie Fossler. Ms. Fossler is going to give us her address, and she's going to have three minutes. Ms. Fossler.
I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street. As I was reading over the agenda last night, I came across not one, not two, not three, not four, but five dear friends who are written into this agenda commemorating this day in which they step into a larger role of leadership in this city. I was so touched that I knew I couldn't be quiet. All this brain power, all this heart, all this enthusiasm, all this skill and capacity, all stepping forward on the same day. I wanted to offer my words of sweetness and support as an extra layer of frosting on that cake we just celebrated. Amy, Judah, Sonia, John, and Cheryl, you guys are the sprinkles on top. Thank you for being the powerhouses you are, and I'm even more delighted to be a citizen of Bastrop right now. Bless your journeys. Thank you.
And now you know why she is the famous Carrie Fossler. Thank you, Ms. Fossler. All right. The next person we have signed up to speak is Peggy Dimick. Ms. Dimick, if you'll give us your address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
I love to talk, so. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, citizens of Bastrop. I'm new here. I've been here for about a year and a half, but I better give you my address first. 216 Trailside Lane, Bastrop, Texas. Okay. So, I am a silver-haired legislator. I don't know if you all know who that is, but we are advocates for senior citizens 60 years and older, and we work with the legislatures in Austin, and we were in session all week last week, and it reminded me, I've met with your mayor, but I have not met with all of you. So, I brought you something. This.
This is going to tell you.
Yeah, you can just hand him to him.
This will give you an idea of who we are and what we do. We have, we work on resolutions throughout the year, and then when we go into session, as we were last week, we vote on them as a group, and then they go into a legislative report, and they go to the legislators, and we advocate, we are advocates for seniors and for things that would benefit their health, their welfare. And what can I say? I'm new at this. But we have probably about 114 positions. We're not full here in Texas right now, but I am in the capital area, and if there's ever anything that you all can see here in the city of Bastrop that you might need to help someone with, we, we are put, I'll give you an idea. We wrote a resolution on increasing the PNA, which is the Personal Needs Allowance, for senior citizens who are in nursing homes on Medicaid. They have been at $60 a month as their personal allowance. Everything else goes towards their stay at the nursing home. Medicaid picks up the part that they cannot pay, and they have $60 left. So, they are allowed that much each month, and I feel, as a former nursing home administrator and nurse, and I also have personal care, personal and assisted living certifications management, sorry about that, but my time is running out, but we are trying to get that increase to $85, and we'll be turning, that is just one. We have a top 10, and we had 71 altogether that we're going to turn in for the state. But thank you so much, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dimick, and thank you for having the information for Council to learn more about that. You did great. You did great. All right, Council, we are moving on to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Does anybody want, wish to pull anything, remove anything from the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
We have to read it first. Madam, I thought you were going to pull. I was waiting to see. Madam Secretary, if you'd please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 10A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the April 26, 2022 regular meeting. Item 10B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-48 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing as an American Rescue Plan program the transfer of lift station and force main wastewater system improvement, providing for repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmember Plunkett, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We are moving on to our items for individual consideration. We only have three this evening. The first item is 11A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-49 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the appointment of the mayor of Judah Ross to Place 1 of Planning and Zoning Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the Charter and establishing an effective date. Mr. Ross is with us this evening. I told him, he loves council meetings, and I told him we'd be happy to see his smiling face, but certainly it wasn't mandatory for him to be here. I met Mr. Ross after Councilmember Lee recommended that he fill out an application, and Councilmember Lee, do you have anything you'd like to say about Mr. Ross?
I met Mr. Ross via Facebook. I believe he reached out to me and wanted to chat about my course that I ran, because he was very interested in doing more in the community and what was supposed to be like 30, 40-minute lunch. I think we actually started at breakfast, ran into happy hour almost. We talked so long. He's very excited to be part of the Bastrop community. He has a lovely wife and baby. I met them both, and he's motivated. He's motivated, and I think that he would be a good addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As I leave, I think that it would be left in good hands with this appointment.
And Councilmember Lee, it's also worth noting, he jumped into the community and is already a volunteer fireman, so we appreciate, that's quite a dedication. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with Judah about 25 minutes a few days ago after the agenda was published, and just wanted to offer that I think that he'd do a good job in the role.
Thank you very much, and I promise, Councilmember Lee, if you would like to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Judah Ross to Place 1 of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Ross. All right, we're moving on to item 11B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-50 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Sonia Kote to the Place 4 of Main Street Program Advisory Board as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Sonia is like the answer to all things. If you, everyone knows Sonia. If you don't know Sonia, you know David. If you don't, you need to. The storehouse, the farm, they, no small town across the nation has farm-to-fork better demonstrated than by these two individuals. They came with, Sonia came with a very strong recommendation from the Main Street Board. I think the fact that they have two different businesses on Main Street, we all got to enjoy some of her wonderful food at the table on Main, particularly with the Main Street Board's recommendation, I, it's, I just think she's the easiest appointment I've ever made. Is there a motion?
I'd move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion or comments? Councilmember Kirkland?
I'm still on. I also spent some time speaking with her and with Sonia, and yeah, great, great choice.
Yeah, and myself as well. I spoke to Jonas and them both, and great, great people. Great, great to have you in the City of Bastrop and volunteering to be on a board, so thank you very much.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Round of applause for Ms. Sonia. All right, Council, our last item on the agenda tonight is to 11C. We're on the top of page four. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-51 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Amy Bailey to Place 5 of the Cultural Arts Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Amy Bailey has legs that are taller than me, and you, and when you meet her, you immediately know she should be a ballerina, and then you find out that she was, and she's just a wonderful addition to the community. The chair of the Cultural Arts Commission called and said, please, please, put her on our board. She's already jumped into the community, has a lot to do with the film industry as well. I think she'll do a fantastic job on the Cultural Arts Commission. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to give it to the new girl. I have a motion from Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Plunkett, would that be a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Are there any comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Yes.
Let's give Ms. Bailey a round of applause. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Council, that brings us to item 12, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. It's always been the tradition. You're on that end.
I move to approve.
I have, it is 8:17, and I have a motion to adjourn from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
And a second from everyone else. It is 8:17, and we are adjourned. Please be careful going home. Thank you.